And I, when I did my research in the later months of her illness, I found that the Veterans Administration has a pension. It's called Aid and Attendance, and it's specifically used for home care.
I see.
And the benefit is strictly for veterans of wartime and surviving spouses.
I see.
The uniqueness of this is that my company, Veterans Home Care, helps veterans and surviving spouses get home care through this pension from the Veterans Administration. It has three requirements. Basically, it's for veterans and surviving spouses of the wartime eras, and they are World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War.
And Vietnam, right.
The three requirements, of course, the person had to serve at least 90 days with one day during wartime of active duty. They need to have an honorable discharge. They also have to have a serious medical condition, which keeps them approximately 60% housed.
I understand, okay.
And not driving.
Well, and non-medical home care, or even medical home care, is a much more efficient way to deliver services to people besides that they're home and in familiar surroundings. Kathleen, is this a big population? I mean, you're not going to shock me if you tell me it's tens of thousands of people.
Oh, it's thousands of people. Forty-five percent of our seniors here are veterans.
Wow, now that's not surprising. Everybody was involved, especially World War II, and those are, that's really got to be the bubble of the population. So how does a person access these programs? Do they call, apply to your company, or is there a 800 number?
It's 877-878-4248.
Okay, and we'll have that on the screen. Get your pencil and paper out. Say it again, please, 877-
877-878-4248.
Okay, and is there a website as well?
Yes.
And that is?
Our website is www...I left a W.
That's right, we know that. VeteransHomeCare.com. All right, now, once you became energized on this subject, were you surprised when you saw how many people needed this service?
I knew it in my heart. When my mom was ill, I called my husband. I said, "We're starting a new business." Because there have to be thousands of people that are going through exactly what I went through in taking care of my parents. And the pension is difficult to get because you have to spend more than your income on medical expenses in order to receive this.
I understand, but that's not so hard to do with the cost of prescriptions and all the rest. Some of us are really being hammered.
The only qualifying expense that you can use is home care.
I see.
And most people can't afford to pay for home care and the rent. So that's what's unique about Veterans Home Care. We front the money for the veteran and surviving spouse. And when they get the money from the pension, they reimburse us for the services that we've given them.
I see, well, that's wonderful. So often, the upfront costs of getting into a program are so intimidating, people say, "Oh, I just, I don't have the resources to do this."
And they throw their hands up.
Yeah. Now Kathleen, talk to me about planning ahead. What if you're like the son or daughter of a veteran who may be in this position? Can you kind of plan ahead to get these services in place before the need arises?
Yes, that's a great idea to do that. You know, there's a lot of paperwork to compile together.
I'm sure.
That, you know, they need to do that. So preparing for that is the best way. Because we, you know, I prequalify them.
And then what? I didn't miss that.
The papers that they need are going to be the discharge paper, which should be honorable, the marriage license, the death certificate of the spouse. And they need bank statements and a social security award.
You got to prove all of this stuff. Well, I hope this has been of value to you veterans out there who may be in this very unique position. Well, not so unique. Probably a lot of people out there are in this position. Help is available. We'll be putting back the telephone number and the website for you. So please, access this program. There's help available. We'll be right back.
We're here to scientifically prove the end result of riding a bicycle against traffic. The average car weighs 6,000 pounds. The average bicycle with rider weighs 170 pounds, give or take a few. A typical car traveling 35 miles per hour has 220 times the momentum or energy of a bike rider traveling 10 miles per hour. And if two collide... Bug splatter. Avoid being bug splatter. Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
Yo, check this out, I'm at the light, right? Dude was trying to fill me out, so I blew right past him. Ha ha, yeah, I won. But I wasn't the real winner, because he's alive and I'm dead.
What about my family? I wasn't even part of your street race. Now I'm dead.
And don't even think, man, that'll never happen to me, dog, because that's what I thought. And now, I didn't even get a chance to say goodbye.
Listen, life is important. Drive responsibly. Learn more at WatchTheRoad.org.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. Now, anybody in this city knows that we have a great park system. And I want to introduce you to Anthony Montanez, who is with our city park system. And welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Our parks play an amazing key role in the lives of seniors because they can access those facilities. What were some of the special things you learned today about the role that the parks play in lives of seniors?
Well, what I learned through the speaker that spoke earlier was how we can attract the baby boomers. There's a lot of people out there that don't realize that they are seniors.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
And making our senior centers more attractive to them.
Sure. Now, what was the discussion? It was like games or outings?
More outings, camping, skiing, going out, jogging, mountain biking, just fun things to do. Not just sitting there and playing bingo and other, you know, table games are great.
Sure.
But some people want to get out and enjoy the outdoors.
Well, I think so. And the boomers are a lot more active. They like golf outings and going up the mountains, which are nearby, that's for sure. So is this something that you will pass on to activities directors at the various facilities?
Yes, a lot of our directors are in the knowledge fair and they're attending. And hopefully, they'll take that back, and we'll discuss it and how we can get some additional funding to do a lot of this.
Right, well, additional funding, that's going to be a challenge in these times, that's for sure. But have the parks, have they been able to maintain at least a level of service that is sufficient?
I think we have. We haven't really had any major cutbacks. We have had some cutbacks, but I think we're going to be okay. We've got a good group of people out there working hard. We have a great volunteer corps, which really steps up during these times.
Well, I think it's great that when people, once they can get themselves there the first time, they sort of fall into the lifestyle, don't they?
Oh, yes.
And then they bring their best ideas, which I like to see. Now, are the nutrition programs delivered at parks, are they still going on?
Yes, they are. We have several different nutrition programs that come through our parks.
Right, I know I've always been encouraged to see how often our seniors are really getting a good meal and some guidance for nutrition at home.
Yeah, that's a great thing about this. They, you know, the meals, I know they're not, they're filled with a lot of spices and salts and stuff, but they're healthy meals. And, you know, they also get the information they need to take this, take it home and make better meals at home.
Right, I think so. And the best part, though, is the socialization. Seniors getting together with their common interests, even if it's pulling out your wallet and saying, "Well, I've got a new grandkid."
Yeah, oh, yeah, show their pictures.
Are the leagues still going on? The bowling leagues and the pool leagues and things like that?
We do have aqua aerobics.
Uh huh, great.
Water fitness programs at some of our facilities. We have lawn bowling at Arcadia Park. And that seems to attract a lot of people, and it's a great sport.
That's good. Seniors got to get out more often. Anthony Montanez, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll be right back.
Welcome to Braille Institute, a nonprofit organization that has been designed to work with individuals with fading vision. Please come along with us as we explore our Vista store, a store that has many different items and accessories that can support individuals with fading vision. I'm here with our Vista store coordinator, Jorge Marquez, who will explain some of the wonderful items that we have here available for people with low vision.
Hi. Here are a few devices that we have in our store. We have a 10x magnifier mirror. We also have a low-vision keyboard with large print as well. We have an atomic talking watch, and also with large numbers, so that the person can either look at the numbers or can hear the voice. We have a large print button TV remote control that will make it also easier for the person with fading vision. There is a large print big address book. We also have a giant print address book, which is much larger than the one before, with numbers and names that can be very bold in lines. And we also have as well a pocket address book with large words and numbers. We have a pen that is called 2020. This pen will write in bold, and it doesn't leak, and it doesn't go through the page. As you can see, one, and you can see the numbers really bold. As you can see, these devices are very useful for individuals with fading vision. Come and see us at any time. We're here for you, and enjoy. Thank you.
As you can see, we have so many opportunities here for people with fading vision. You may know somebody who has fading vision, or you yourself may have vision that's not doing so well. Remember, we are here. Come and see us. We are here to help you. Almost all of our students have some vision. Only 10% of people have no vision at all. You could be one of those. Somebody with macular degeneration, glaucoma, diabetic retinopathy, or even cataracts. All of those are the people that are here. People with those diseases are the people that are here at Braille Institute. So please, come join us. Your life can be very good again.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. We are still here at the Senior Centers Directors Gathering at the Braille Institute with a longtime friend of our show, Larry Lysnby. It's great to see you again, Larry.
Thank you, it's great to be here.
Are you enjoying the conference?
Absolutely. It was incredible this morning.
Yeah, I heard there was a standing ovation.
It was. He was, he had clearly done his homework. He gave us some really good practical suggestions about what we can do going forward to make our senior centers a success and to meet the needs of the boomers and the seniors.
Well, it's especially challenging in this year with the downsizing and the budget cuts. How are you doing over there at One Generation? Is it, are the challenges insurmountable?
No, they're surmountable. We think we're going to survive. But we do, we've lost staff due to layoffs, and those layoffs were a result of cutbacks in government funding and reductions in grants that are available out there.
Yeah, well, and the economy is flat. I don't know what else to call it. And isn't it remarkable, this happens at exactly the time when the needs are increasing because there are more and more seniors?
It's as if there were an inverse relationship. Just as our funding goes down, the need for services has gone up.
It's remarkable. I know I spoke with seniors group, and we were talking about the greater need for volunteers who can help fill in the gap with their wisdom and their energy.
Yes, and because of cutbacks in staffing, the need for volunteers is going to increase this coming year.
I think so.
Most seniors would not be able to function, in my opinion, without additional volunteers.
It's true. This is a place where we really have to plug the holes. We need to step up, and whether it's meal delivery or food service or transportation, or just someone to help run the dance class, for goodness sake.
Yes, we're increasingly relying upon volunteers to conduct our programs, activities, exercises.
Well, of course, a volunteer gets so much more back. I know, I see that across the board. The volunteers are just, they beam with pleasure knowing they're doing some good for their community.
And the good news in all this is as the baby boomers come online, more of them are interested in serving as opposed to being served. So they're looking for meaningful outlets, and they have a lot to contribute.
Well, when you come away from this gathering, will you have some new ideas and some fresh approaches, you think?
Absolutely. I'm excited about getting back to my staff and saying, "Look, these are some of the things we learned about as we can attract seniors to our center, make it more attractive, make their experience here more meaningful, more relevant." So that should be a good outcome.
That's a good reason to have these conferences. Like-minded people sharing their best ideas.
Yes, it is. We do this every six months, and we always go away with things that we can do to make our centers more effective, more attractive, and to benefit the seniors.
Great. Larry, thank you again for being with us today. It's a great pleasure. And thanks so much for being with us today on Aging Well in L.A.
Good morning. It is 10:10. We are waiting a quorum call. I want to thank my colleagues that are here. Councilor Al Daccon, Councilor Garcetti, Councilor Weisar, Councilor Rosenthal, Councilor Zinn and Westen, Councilor Wilson, our president. We do have- We do have a few more council colleagues that are scheduled to be here. I know some are leaving the Housing Committee on their way down. It's 10:10 as the quorum call. Sergeant, can you please make the call so that we can get the other members here and begin this council meeting? So I'd like to see you get on the phone fast and furious and find the rest of the members of this house. Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the council chambers, the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Herb Wesson. I am the president of the city council. Let's get to work. Mr. Clerk, call or roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weisar, Caressa, Correa, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
That would be approval of the minutes.
Okay, Zine moves, Reyes seconds, next.
Mr. President, that brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, Mr. Garcetti seconds. Okay, members, let's go through the agenda quickly if we may. Mr. Clerk, would you please run through the agenda, starting with our first section?
Very good, sir. However, before doing so, there's been a request from a member to continue item 13 to January 18.
Okay, without objection.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that brings us to items 1 through 11. There are items noted for a public hearing.
Any cards?
Yes, we have cards on 1, 8, and 11, 1, 8, and 11, sir.
Okay, we will call those items special. Specials, members. Okay, let's open and close the public hearing on the remaining ballots. And, Mr. Clerk, this, or Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the remaining items.
11 ayes.
Okay, next order of business.
Mr. President, items 12 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. Might I recommend holding item 14 on the desk until such time as the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee report from this morning's meeting has been circulated?
That's fine, and let's get that report as soon as we can. Okay, on those member specials, hearing and seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next.
Mr. President, items 15 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection.
Mr. President, on the, on those items, we do have, excuse me, items 15 through 17 are commission appointments. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
No, what I want to do is request if the chairs from those committees are comfortable with these commissioners, that we just vote on those items. So if they haven't been held, and if the committee chairs are comfortable, we've got a very, very important item to discuss today. So I would ask for the courtesy from the two chairs to allow us to just vote on those items. Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, it appears from those chairs or their staffs that that would be okay. We do have cards on matters in those sections. As a matter of fact, we have cards on all items with the exception of 22, so that's 15 through 21.
So we have cards on all items except?
22, in that section, sir. 15 through 21, we have cards on.
Okay, so then we have to hold those items, and let's open the roll and close the roll, well, no, let's vote on 22. And let's, so now with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. Clerk, or, excuse me, Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, well, trust me, Mr. Clerk, I've been called worse than Mr. Clerk, so it's okay. You know, whatever you want to call me is okay.
Very good, sir.
All right, did we get the report back from the committee?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, it has not yet been circulated.
Okay, then what I'm going to do now is let's begin the public comment process, but as soon as I get that, as soon as that report arrives, I want to know about it, and we will immediately take up, is it item 14 that deals with the CRA?
Yes, sir.
So as soon as the report comes, let me know. All right.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, we do still have the commissioners on the desk if you'd like to go to those before public comment.
Let's, let me go through three public comment cards.
Very good, sir.
And then we'll go to the commissioners. Daniel Gus, Scott Smith, Arnold Sacks, please come forward. I don't see Mr. Smith, I don't see Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, my friend.
Good morning, dear friend.
Yesterday, the LAPD got raped for about $4,000 in its resources. Animal Services hasn't had a police officer at its commission meeting in years. Yesterday, they didn't have one officer, they didn't have two officers, they had three officers, including Commander Andy Smith, for three and a half hours? What does Andy Smith and two officers cost for three and a half hours? I'm going to guess about $7,000 to $1,000 an hour. I assume that they were there for me, because after the first agenda item, the only other member of the audience was Phyllis Doherty. So three LAPD officers were either there for Phyllis Doherty, or they were there for me because I'm a whistleblower. The LAPD is trying to intimidate and suppress my work as a whistleblower against the corruption of the Animal Services Commissioner. Here's Andy Smith mentally masturbating for three and a half hours, two officers, and Jim Bickhart. Do you want to see what Jim Bickhart did for three and a half hours? He slept, as he always does in commission meetings. The LAPD cannot intimidate the free speech of a whistleblower. Ruth Ann Secunda is friends with Melanie Ramsay, or the commission president. The commission president is best friends with Lou Parker. If you're friends with Lou Parker, or anybody that takes off her panties for the mayor, you apparently can squander thousands of-
Daniel, Daniel, come on.
It's true.
But just finish your statement.
Lou Parker dated the mayor, like a few seconds back. Lou Parker dated the mayor, and that's the connection. You can squander thousands of dollars of LAPD resources to intimidate a whistleblower. You can't have that. What was Commander Andy Smith doing for three and a half hours at a commission meeting with two other officers when it has been years since there has been one officer at Animal Services? They were either there for me, five seconds, thank you. They were either there for me or for Phyllis Doherty. You know the corruption's going on, stop the intimidation, I already complained to the ACLU. This is wrong, thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Mr. Smith, Scott Smith.
Thank you. I'm with the Union of Medical Marijuana Patients, and we'll be passing around a paper from AgSite, which is a company that we've worked with to provide a service which will allow the city to adequately regulate medical marijuana dispensaries, even if PAC decision is upheld, which we believe it will be. And we've had very productive meetings with your staff members to explain how this could be done. We'd also like to again point out that a ban will make the problems it is intended to solve worse, namely neighborhood complaints and crime. Because what will happen is, all those medical marijuana patients will be dispersed to every neighborhood in the city. The neighbors will smell the marijuana, and this will attract crime. And the other problem is that marijuana is very hard to grow in this climate, and the net result is, a lot of those patients are going to go to the black market. So if you feel that there have been too many problems with the 350 medical marijuana dispensaries, they have adequate security. Dispersing the problem, to the extent it is a problem, to every neighborhood would be extremely counterproductive, and we'll pass around the information that we've been gathering from law enforcement on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Arnold Sacks. I'm going to go a little bit around. I was reading in, I believe it was today's LA Times, there was an editorial by, and the man who wrote it, Richard Steiner, is a marine conservative conservation professor at the University of Alaska, and he writes about ignoring deep water, which was the oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico. But what he fails to mention in this editorial regarding this oil spill was when they were trying to side about the lawsuits or having the hearing in front of a federal judge, there were concerns because of so many federal judges had interests, had shares of oil stock. And so, it's not mentioned in the editorial, but it's a quiet killer that federal judges should have interest in oil stock, and the price of oil and gas is skyrocketing. That being said, in yesterday's newspaper, and he's missing today, is Councilman Parks, but somehow or other, the LA Times is able to get quotes from Councilman Parks regarding the Coliseum. And I believe his concerns about payments being made, but wasn't he a commissioner? Oh, no, he is a commissioner. So what was his concerns when he sits on the board? That being said, there was a story in The Future of Hollywood on January 2nd, the mayor and others have big plans. And yet, on the 9th, they were talking about the plans, and who's making, who are they talking about here as part of the story? Planning Commissioner Mike Wu. Well, doesn't that ring a bell? Yeah, because Mike Wu was the city council representative for that area that now he's sitting on the planning commission for. But don't take anything, and don't think that means anything, he's just, he's a city councilman, now he's the planning commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Okay, what, we've only got four cards left, so I'm going to call the last four speakers on public comment. Mr. John Walsh, Matt Dowd, Michael Carion, I'd like to see you move this way, and Nadine Hayes. And that closes the public comment portion of this council meeting. Good morning, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, Mr. Wesson, President Wesson. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, approximately 1 million successful server requests last year. Incidentally, we oppose the ban on medical marijuana clinics, although I'm a harsh critic. Reform, not banning. Not that I would ever take dope, because it's named after the people who own the clinics. First of all, we had an incredible thing happen yesterday over at the county. Zev tried to pretty much close down public comment, and the storm over there was incredible. I would like to thank Core, I'd like to thank the people who said it was racist, Core, we remember Core from the Freedom Riders, and Zev being a coward, immediately backed down. Now, number 14 is on the agenda today. HollywoodHighlands.org, go to Walsh Confidential, that is the CRA. Now, you're claiming you already held a public hearing. It was held simultaneously to this meeting. I'm asking Mr. Rosendahl and the rest of you to open comment. This has been jammed through, you haven't even received a report. I want two minutes to speak on the CRA. And we, over 1 million, and I want to say, there was a little show on Channel 2, which was a dramatization of the mayor claiming that his father beat him up. I would read the New Yorker magazine story, it's absolutely false, his father is not a white beater, and read the Daily News, the stories, it was contradicted, and the mayor is creating this false image of him being beaten up. He was beaten up by his stepfather, not his father, by his stepfather. Read the New Yorker profile. And I just want to say HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you, and I'll be here for 14.
And Mr. Walsh, in the event that the Denver Broncos win this weekend, I hope you will come back and-
We don't have time for this, we don't have time for this.
And do another T-Boing. Mr. Dowd, wait till I call you. So, again, my request is if the Denver Bronco wins, Mr. Walsh, when you come next week, that you T-Bow for us. Mr. Dowd, the floor is yours.
Thank you, yes, but in the interest of moving along, you wanted everyone up here waiting and ready, so we're all here waiting and ready, so I know I'm in order, and then you want to waste time talking about stupid football.
I felt like wasting time.
Don't interrupt me, I want to keep my role on now that you got me pissed off. Quick recap, Matt Dowd, Tom Labange, who's not here, Labong, the bong, came up with a permit system so LAPD could profile everybody on Venice Beach. They came up with permits, took all your names, addresses, made you go in a spot, put you in a lottery system, it all turned out to be illegal, a federal judge ruled, and I filed a complaint with the city for a bunch of performers. The city did nothing for two years, they wanted to play with fire, so they lost it all, you lost your lottery and you lost your precious permits. And that's a recap, and that was October 2010, and what have they done since then? And what have they done since then? Nothing. And I got damages. I'm getting separated from my family. I've got dental health problems, all these things that added up because of these dumb attorneys, worthless pieces of crap up here who couldn't find their way out of a paper bag, and I beat them in federal court with Zuma Dog with no attorney. Federal court. I'm just a dummy off the beach. You know, and Eric Garcetti over here must be squirming right now at Herb Wesson. It's atrocious. Look at the mess, see? And Eric came out with all these rules. These guys don't know how to enforce them, Eric. And you know what I mean by that, because Herb don't say anything. The attorney does, but he's afraid to, because I got a federal case over that. It's a mess. Because of Eric Garcetti, could have dealt with it a long time ago, too, but he's too pompous and arrogant, and all warm and fuzzy, and thinks everything's lovely, but it's So, why don't we get on with the commission appointments and keep this 2012 train rolling, baby?
Thank you. And if our technician can work on the sound, that was bad sound. Michael, Michael Carrion, and then Ms. Hayes.
Yes, my name's Michael Carrion. I've been complaining about parking and lack of parking enforcement for years. I got a call, or my employer got a call, from a Lieutenant Jerry Rodriguez from the LAPD Officer Office of Operations. Why do you know why I was making so much complaints? What the hell does he got doing calling my employer? If this is not a clear-cut proof of retaliation, what is? But yet, nobody's going to do anything about it. The cars are still parked illegally right outside. You have an ordinance that says, "Don't build a building unless you have enough parking for your employees." LAPD's parked outside illegally, but every council member here chooses to do nothing about it. You got horse blinders on. I like to call donkey blinders. Take the last minute to ask my council member. I spoke to him regarding barricades on Soto. Been there for a few years. Been litigated, yet nobody does anything. I came within five feet from killing a child, running him over. I drive a full-size Suburban with a trailer. A child cannot read the sign that says, "Do not enter." Go across the street and walk in the mud. Yet, you come back and you speak about Bring Back Broadway, and Mr. Weeser's staff says, "We will do anything, we will go with you to City Hall to bend the rules and do whatever we have to to get these things done." To move some barricades? I've called his office, and Ana Cubas still hasn't returned my call. I want a follow-up. Where are we at? Does somebody have to die before these barricades get moved? There is no walking across the street. Building and safety won't do anything about it, so I asked Mr. Weeser to put a little effort into El Serena, Boyle Heights, like you do into Bring Back Broadway. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good to see you. Ms. Hayes?
First of all, I would appreciate if Councilman Reyes would stop his private conversation. When people are up here talking, we only get two minutes, and I really would like to see people paying attention to the people that are up here. Our time is valuable, just like your time is valuable. Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying, thank you for calling the dogs off. This is the first—yesterday was my first time in LA since—the Occupy movement was broken up, that I have not been harassed by the police officers in this city. I have been harassed to the point that I've had to call my husband to come pick me up because I was so emotionally upset. There's been a vendetta or something out for occupiers, and it has to stop. I am sick and tired of hatred. So, please, please, whatever you do, stop the hatred and start communicating with these people. Their time is precious, too, and they're only trying to make this world a better place. I do, however, also have a testimony that apparently city government—I don't have faith in national government, but I think city government still has hope. And I thank my representative, Mr. Cricor—Cricor—Cricorian? Might not say his name, but I've been to his office numerous times, and he's got a very nice gentleman by the name of John, and I don't know the last name, but I think that one of the reasons why things were better for me yesterday is because John got on the phone and did some phone calling, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I still want to work with whoever, and I don't know who I talk to to find out who works with the Occupy people. I've left messages. Nobody's ever called. I would like to know who I go to to find out, who to work with to talk to Occupy, who to work with for getting the homeless off of this street.
Thank you. We'll have somebody come—Sergeants, why don't you chat with Ms. Hayes? Let her give you her concerns, and we'll try to put her in touch with whoever she wants to be in touch with. Okay, that concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, that—we can quickly deal with the commissioner appointments. I think we can take items 15 and 16 together, so do whatever you have to do to make that happen.
Very good, sir. Items 15 and 16 called special for cards.
Okay, again, members, these two commission appointments were called special for cards. I would hope that when the folk that called them special are finished, that we can move on and vote on it. So, Mr. Dowd, I'm going to call you up on items 15 and 16.
What happened with 17? I thought I had 16 and 17.
Yeah, well, I'm going to take 17 up separately, so you'll be able to speak on that as well. So, go ahead.
Okay. So, can we get the commissioners up, though?
No, you just go on and speak, Mr. Dowd.
Where's the commissioner we're appointing?
Matt, speak.
I mean, I want to speak on 16. Let's get that clear. I'm talking for a minute on 16.
Okay, go right ahead.
The Commission on Disability, you know, I think we ought to hand out a lot more placards to everybody. First of all, if you're in traffic court down here in West LA, or anywhere in the city of LA, and you're getting a conviction for failing to use an indicator, you should get a disability placard with that, because that's like one finger, it's like one, like just indicate, like that. So, if you're failing to do that, and so, this is—these are the things the Commission on Disability, they could probably look at. So, I'd like this commissioner to really look at that, you know? You know, if you've got that problem, I think that's a disability, and I see a lot of it out there.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, members, seeing no members in the queue, where it relates to items 15 and 16, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, on—that brings us, Mr. Clerk, to what item? 17?
That brings us to item 17, called special for cards.
Okay, I have Mr. Sacks and Mr. Dowd. If you guys will please come forward. In fact, Mr. Dowd, you're first. Matt, you're first.
Where's the Laces Commissioner? I want to see this one, the latest one to lose money, probably. Look, here's what I want to tell them. All right, Apple Corp is reporting their earnings next Tuesday, so I would say by about lunchtime on Thursday, sell everything, okay? Stocks. I'm only going to say it once. That's advice for the Laces Commissioner, because you've lost billions of dollars. I'd like to see Jan Perry become the mayor, because she's the only one who respects the foundation of the whole system and the principles, not Eric Garcetti. And that's going to be important, the reason I'm talking about it, because the mayor appoints these commissioners. So, I want to be able to be free—sorry to have my public criticism of things I don't like.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. I believe this gentleman is being appointed to the Employees Retirement System Board to replace the person the mayor just took off from the board. And when the LA Times did a story regarding that removal, that her position had been terminated, it mentioned that when she was considered for the commission, and she was appointed to the commission, she had to sign a letter, a resignation letter, so that she could be terminated without cause if the mayor so chose to do it. So, in essence, she was quitting before she even signed on to do any work. So, I was thinking that that would be a great idea for pension reform, that you could have new employees sign these letters, and they could be terminated without cause, which would eliminate some of the rigor morale and the actions that take place, like we saw with the DWP when the two employees or the three employees were shown driving around and visiting the strip bar while they were on out, while they were under employment. The idea of having a letter where you're quitting before you even go to work, maybe we could even have the councilmen, although it's stretching the point a little bit because they are elected, another choice for the public. But something along the lines where they sign a letter where they promise—well, no, they can't promise, because that would turn them into dust or something—but something along the line where they get a letter that they would try to uphold some kind of civility.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Seeing no members in the queue on this item, 17, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Keely. Okay. At this—it's—I've been informed that item 14, that that document has been circulated. We had a very important and interesting discussion earlier in committee, and basically, I suggested that we take that committee hearing and bring it down here. At this point in time, I'm going to ask Mr. Reyes to take the com, and then Mr. Kardnis, he will turn it over to you. You'll bring up the city staff, and we will continue where we left off earlier. So, with that said, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Kardnis, since this is an important item, I will ask the clerk to explain. Read the item to the public that's here with us today.
Mr. President, before council now is a Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee report from earlier this morning that submits without recommendation recommendations of the chief legislative analyst and city administrative officer relative to the city taking on the role as the successor agency in regards to the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Councilman Kardnis?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank, as we have the CLA, the CAO, and if we can have the appropriate city attorney or city attorneys at the table, and any other support staff, because you're going to get a lot of questions from the council members. This is obviously an issue that the state legislature and the governor has put us into a tailspin, and we need to make a decision locally, as they've given us a deadline as well. This was heard earlier this morning in the Housing and Community Economic Development Committee, this report, and I want to thank the staff for all of their hard work. We were thinking the report was going to come out last Friday, and then Monday morning, et cetera, but with all due respect, we understand that you want to make sure that you cover all the bases and give as much information as you can to the policymaking body here, so I want to thank you all for your hard work. In addition to that, I'd like to thank everybody from the public who came and spoke in the housing committee, and everybody was very respectful and spoke very, very direct to the issues that they are concerned about and the things that they would like to hear clarified as well before this body makes a decision. And we've heard from some of the union representatives, some of the workers, community members, developers, et cetera, some people who actually stated about their involvement and/or interactions with the Community Redevelopment Authority of Los Angeles, both good and bad experiences, but at the same time, again, I was glad to hear that there were a lot of compliments for all of the good work that has come out of this authority. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is have the benefit of all of our colleagues on the council to hear the report, so please don't worry about repeating yourself. We had five members in the committee this morning, but all the council members need to be as informed as possible so we can make and move forward and make the right decision. So, I don't know if the CLA or the CAO is going to start, but go ahead.
Certainly. I'll start off by, as I did in committee, giving sort of an overview of the issues that are before you. Miguel will get into some more detail on some of the cost and personnel issues. First of all, I think it's important to try to separate out issues that are the same regardless of whether or not the city becomes the successor agency. The only decision before you today is whether or not you want to move forward and be the successor agency that will oversee, in essence, the winding down of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Redevelopment, as you all know it, is gone. It is gone. It will not occur, as you've seen it in the past. No longer are you going to see the staff of the Redevelopment Agency identifying property, finding developers, putting deals together. That is gone. That is prohibited by the law. It's prohibited in the—by the successor agency. So, whether or not you opt to become the successor agency, the city is going to have to find a way going forward to do economic development. It's clearly something we need, but it cannot occur as it's occurred in the past. Something else that's the same regardless of whether or not we are the successor agency is the Oversight Board. There's a seven-member board, two of which will be appointed by the city, four of which will be appointed by the county, and one, the Community College District. So, in essence, five of the seven board members are incentivized to try and free up as much money as possible for their coffers. So, the city's interests—the city will not control the board, and all other board members are going to have interests that are largely contrary to the city's. Third, property tax flow. There will be property tax coming from the city regardless of whether or not we are the successor agency. On an ongoing basis, it's estimated to be between $17 and $20 million a year. And again, no matter what your decision is today, that's going to occur. Now, you saw in the report, and you'll hear later, that if we are the successor agency, there is substantially more money that would be coming to the city, but that additional money can be used only to honor existing contracts, wind down the CRA, and pay for administrative costs. And the bottom line is, that's not enough money to do that. So, there is a potential hit on the general fund, and we believe that the net impact to the city is we end up with less money as a successor agency in our general fund than if we are. Third, staff reductions—are another one, staff reductions are going to occur. The legislation now would cap administrative costs at 5%. In a year, that goes down to 3%. Now, what that represents, based on current CRA spending, is a 78% reduction in their administrative budget. So, there is no way to get a 78% reduction in the budget without substantial staff reductions. And finally, I think it goes to the issue of the city's seat at the table, and that was the hardest issue for me, quite frankly. It took quite a while for me to get to the point of recommending opting out. Intuitively, if we're sitting at the table, it would seem that we are in a better position to advocate for projects, but you have to understand that the only advocacy as the successor agency is whether or not there are legal obligations. The issue of whether or not a project is worthwhile, the issue of how many jobs it creates, the issue of the blight that it will remove, those are all irrelevant issues by law. The board can't address those. The successor agency can't address those. It can only argue that a project has an enforceable obligation behind it. So, that, I think, are the broad issues before you, and again, it was a very difficult recommendation to make, but at the end of the day, I do not believe that the legislation as currently structured provides—that it's in the city's interest to be the successor agency. structured provides, that it's in the city's interest to be the successor agency.
Good morning. Miguel Santana, CAO. I would like to add what Jerry said in that, for me, this, of all the difficult issues I've had to deal with in the last two and a half years, this has been by far the most difficult, in part because there is no clear path, and also because the information we have is very limited and is subject to interpretation and change. We just passed out a pie chart that looks like this, and the reason why we did this is to really go back and remind everyone as to what the original intent behind the elimination of the CRAs around the state was, and that was simply to provide more funding for education and for the county. The distribution chart shows that for every dollar that becomes available through the dissolution of the CRA, the schools receive about half of that, and the county receives a quarter, and the city receives a quarter of it to the general fund. And so based on that analysis, there is an incentive, as Jerry said, to make as much funding available to address the shortfall in the state. In fact, the governor even went ahead and budgeted for how much he would anticipate receiving due to the dissolution of the CRAs. It's organized so that the interests who are motivated to receive this funding have the authority. As Jerry indicated, the Oversight Committee is the entity that makes the final decisions on what to move forward on and what to not, what's an allowable cost and what is not an allowable cost. And they have to do that with the blessing of this Department of Finance that reports to the governor. The role of the successor agency is simply to implement the direction of the Oversight Committee. There is no authority beyond that for the Oversight Committee, for the successor agency, rather. So as we started assessing the potential liability, we had to take a conservative approach to assume a scenario where the interests who make the decision are going to make decisions that make their pot as big as possible. So we establish on our report that while it's difficult to narrow down what the potential hit on the general fund is, we could reasonably say that it's approximately $109 million, assuming that the Oversight Committee is not mandated or chooses not to take care of the pension cost. The pension costs make up the bulk of that, of that number, and these are pension costs that have been incurred today. Unlike, so if, when you dissolve an organization, there are future costs that have to be dealt with, and the question would be whether it would have to be dealt with in one big check or would it could be paid over time. And that is not clear. It's not specified in the legislation. That would be one thing that we would want to specify in the legislation. And while it states in the legislation that it's, it could be an allowable cost, it also gives the Oversight Committee the ability to make that determination. So if we were to be the successor agency, we would want that clarified and mandated, that there would be no discretion as to whether or not it would be an allowable cost. But if we were to assume for a second that in fact they were to cover the pension cost, which is the most significant that we're talking about, there is still not enough funding to cover the operational costs that we would inherit. As Jerry indicated, there is, we receive 3% of, for administrative costs of the total pot for this fiscal year and 5% next fiscal year. And that doesn't come nearly as close as we need to cover the costs of the existing It's, assuming you do not have to cover the pension costs, we still are confronting about a $30 million shortfall in our general fund. So making the recommendation really came down to an assessment of risk and possibly considering under what kind of scenario, under what kind of possibility would we consider being the successor agency and perhaps even ask for that clarification in that direction from the state legislature and the opportunity to reconsider that decision. But as if, as it stands today, in light of a current $75 million shortfall and a projected $200 million shortfall starting July 1st, we have no ability, no flexibility, no cushion in our, in our own finances to take on a liability so great. The other piece of it is the unknown, and there's liability resulting from lawsuits that we cannot predict. We cannot put a number on that. And the successor agency, if should we choose to be the successor agency, we believe our liability is heightened. The city is likely to get sued either way. I think people would argue that because it, we have, it's within the city boundaries. Many of these projects don't just have CRA money, they have other sources, but it's very clear that the successor agency has a primary responsibility. And those decisions unfortunately are not in the hands of the successor agency. All the decisions of what to move forward on, what projects to cancel are in the hands of the Oversight Committee, of which we only have two appointments. One of them has to be a labor representative. The final point I want to make is, is what Jerry outlined as well, is that this, the first step is really to acknowledge that the CRA is no longer in existence as we understood it. And so based on that, the question is, how do you proceed forward and mitigate the risk to the rest of the city? But beyond that, there is an opportunity to have a larger conversation about economic development, and we would encourage you, as one of our recommendations, that that conversation happen after this decision, because the governor may have killed the CRA, but he did not kill economic development.
We do have several members on the queue, but Councilor Cardenas, I know you were chair of the committee, I want to make sure your questions were addressed. Councilor Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I thought my time had expired, but I'll do the Bernard version today. I get a few extra minutes. Thank you, Mr. President. One of the questions I'd like to ask because liability seems to be at the forefront of what, what we should do here, and as I mentioned in the committee, in AB 26, the bill that was actually sustained by the courts, much to our disappointment and dismay, it talks about how, I'll read a section, it says, "For purposes of this part, enforceable obligations means any of the following: legally enforceable payments required in connection with the agency's employees, including but not limited to pension, pension payments, pension obligation, debt service, and unemployment payments." And in the, one of the documents that we have here, a big portion of the liability that we need to consider is in fact what the bill actually says, we will be protected, as in the general fund will be protected. What I read is this bill says that those things will be paid from tax increment dollars, not from cities or counties' general funds who choose to continue to participate. So could you please clarify for us why that's still a concern in your report when it appears that in the bill, it seems to be black and white?
We spent a lot of time looking at that legislation, and that's why, you know, I started off by saying that there's a, an assessment of risk. If that would be mandated, if the Oversight Committee was mandated and we had 100% assurance that in fact the pension costs would be covered, okay, then that would reduce the liability. But there is still some discretion, and if we were to be the successor agency, we would insist as a successor agency that they cover that full cost. It would be one of the top things we would ask for and argue. But they still have that discretion. What is, what is also, what is, what is clear though, is that putting aside the pension costs, there's still costs related to the salaries and the healthcare benefits of the, of the employees. And as we indicated in our report, there is, there is a significant difference in the level of pay that, that CRA employees receive to city employees. Their, it's, their average pay is about $106,000, $109,000, the city is $72,000. The payment towards pensions, most city employees are, on the civilian side, are contributing 11% towards pensions. CRA employees don't pay anything for pensions. And so those differentials is where we're concerned that the, that should we take, if should we be the successor agency and continue forward on this program, that because there isn't 100% certainty in, in, in these two conflicting ideas, on one hand, it states that this is an allowable cost, on the other hand, it gives the Oversight Committee the discretion to make that decision. Anything in between that is not approved by the Oversight Committee, the successor agency is accountable for, and that's where we believe the risk lies. And so it could be as high as 109, it could be as low as 31, as I indicated. What's not calculated in there is the ERIP cost, because current employees in the CRA are required to pay that cost for ERIP, as well as the future pension cost, should the workforce remain, whether it's through CALPERS, which is the arrangement today, or where they would start fresh with Lasers, those future costs, the successor agency's contribution for that are not in, in what we calculate, because we don't know what they would be. Would, would we now require that those employees that get assumed to the city to make an 11% contribution like most everyone else? Or are we, are we going to maintain the contract with CALPERS to create the same arrangement that exists today where they pay nothing into the, into the system? And so there's additional costs that because those involve decisions that need to be negotiated, we didn't, we didn't reflect in, in that analysis.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just to follow up on that same point to get a response from the city attorney, on the section that I read relevant to pension costs and things of that nature, should the Oversight Board for some reason say, no, that's not covered by the tax increment, you got to figure out another way to pay that? What are, what is the likelihood that, that we would not prevail should we have to challenge that in court?
Kelly Martin, city attorney and general counsel for the CRA LA. That language is really strong language, and we have other arguments that, for example, the existing pension costs, the CALPERS approximately $25 million, and the unfunded retiree healthcare benefit that's on the books, which is about $53 million or about $78 million of the total costs, are, were also put on the statement of indebtedness. So we've looked at all the sort of arrows in the quiver of legal arguments that we would make, and as regards the $78 million, we have pretty good arguments. Of course, it's not entirely risk-free because the Oversight Board does have that approval. So I think the CAO's statement that even if you take out that $78 million, you still have $30 million of risk, I think that's a fair assessment. I think with respect to the $78 million, I think it's more likely than not that we would prevail if we had to litigate over it.
Sure.
But it's certainly not a zero risk on the $78 million, and with respect to the $30 million, I think that those issues are more problematic legally.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Cardenas. And we have several colleagues on the queue. Next is Councilor Alarcon, then Councilor Perry, then Councilor Gracorian. So Councilor Alarcon?
We've had a lot of conversation about whether or to what extent we assume liability, and as difficult as it is to give firm statements about liability because we simply don't have the time to do all the legal analysis, to really have a hard position on this, your recommendations are primarily based on, on the best decision you can make given the short time we have. But I have seen nothing relative to what liability the city assumes should we choose not to be the successor agency. In other words, we approved all these contracts, we approved the MOUs, we approved the collective bargaining agreements. Is there anything in the court's decision that shields us from retrospective liability?
I think that the city will be the recipient of litigation going forward. I mean, as the CAO and CLA pointed out, I think that there is going to be litigation nonetheless, that the city will be asked to defend because of its role as the Oversight Board. At the end of the day, whether that liability accrues to the city, it would depend on the specifics. Certainly, there would be litigation costs.
What risk are we, what risk do we have on that scale? We've analyzed the risk of managing the agency relative to this 100-plus million dollars, but what is the risk if we don't manage the agency?
One of the, there's quantifiable risks associated with this, and then there's unquantifiable, both unquantifiable risks and unquantifiable benefits. And one of the issues we've been struggling with, and I think it's part of why the CLA struggled so long over this, is one of the things we're going to lose, both on the litigation side and on the continuation of the development of the existing enforceable obligations where the contracts have been fully signed, is the control factor. The CRA, because of its close relationship with the city over since 1948, has worked very collaboratively to do things, and to the extent that there were records maintained by the CRA that the city needed, we would provide them, to the extent that, so I'm sorry, the risk, maybe I'm...
I just want to know, how much risk are we assuming if we do not become the successor agency? Is it equivalent or is it greater than the risk of assuming to be the successor agency? And we, since we've had no analysis on that, I'm, I'm very concerned that we'll make a decision and expose a very broad blind side.
Very quickly, as, as a non-attorney, all I can say is that neither Ms. Martin nor other city attorneys, Kurt Kidder, Noreen Vincent, has suggested that we're increasing our risk in any way by opting out.
Okay, well, we are...
Thank you, Councilor Alarcon. Those are the three minutes. Councilor Alarcon?
Has that analysis been conducted?
We have a long discussion. Thank you, Ms. Councilor Alarcon. Next is Councilor Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let me start out with the most important point first. It does seem clear to me that unless the state adopts clarifying language in subsequent legislation, it probably does not benefit the city to become a successor agency. And I don't want us to get into some sort of a financial trap, if you will, and I would be very supportive of any legislation that would clarify that for all the projects that we have in the pipeline that are at different stages, pre-development to post-development and sign-off, we need clarification so that we can understand where our projects stand and what exactly are the liabilities and what the potential is for liability. Now, I know there's also a lot of discussion about cities and counties across the state not becoming successor agencies. Now, today, the Daily News reported a majority of California cities with redevelopment areas have taken on the role of successor agency, and while that's unverified, it was reported publicly. Los Angeles is, is a different animal because we have the redevelopment agency as a separate agency. Other cities have their redevelopment function as part of a city department. Now, the city, if we do go the, the opt-out route, the city would have two appointments to the Oversight Board even if the city opts not to be a successor agency. Now, it should be noted that if the county opts not to be a successor agency, then the successor agency will be a three-person board, all appointed by the governor, and I don't know where our voice would be. And I don't know where our voice would be in a board like that, particularly if we have some lag time between a board like that having some clarifying language, so that we know where our projects, the work that we have on the table now, and where that will get done. I just have a couple of other quick questions, and I'll stop talking altogether. It's critical to understand that the city has until, I believe, January 31st. Okay, I guess I'm out of time now? Okay, great, thank you. So the council has to decide whether the Housing Department should become the agency that controls all the housing assets. Now, if the council doesn't choose housing as the automatic successor for housing assets, then it will be Hackla, and I think that's not an option that I want to go to. So I want to close that door right now. I raised another issue upstairs in committee about an idea I had several years ago about a downtown development agency. I made a motion on that. We can talk about that later, because that's separate and apart from this.
If I could address the issue that you raised, should the city choose not to be the successor agency? And there's a three-person panel. The legislation, as I understand it, doesn't have a timeframe. It only has a timeframe as to when the city decides to be the successor agency, and then when the transition occurs, which is February 1st. What it doesn't specify is at what point does the governor have to create this third-person panel if nobody else steps up? The county or any other taxing district can, in fact, choose to be the successor agency and become it if they're the first one to submit a resolution to the county auditor controller. If no one does that, and frankly, I would be surprised if any entity does it, given the liability, then the governor can appoint this three-person panel. Until he does that, until the three-person panel is established, the current structure stays intact. And so come February 1st, come, you know, March 1st, June 1st, until there's that three-person panel or some other agency decides to submit a resolution, the existing structure is what maintains itself. And I'll ask the city attorneys, Kelly, perhaps, to clarify that. But that's my understanding.
Before you begin, I want to ask the folks behind our council members, we have like 12 conversations on this side, there's eight conversations on this side. It's a very important issue. Please, let's respect the conversation on the floor. Please take your conversations outside. Thank you. Please, Madam Attorney.
Yes, I believe that is correct. This legislation is not a model of clarity. But until there is a successor, the CRA will continue to remain in place under the kinds of prohibitions on taking new actions that it currently has. So we will keep paying employees, we will keep the structure in place, until there's somebody to hand the baton to.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilwoman Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to follow up on Mr. Alarcon's point about liability regardless of what we choose. And I think, Mr. Santana, you also mentioned that there's a likelihood that the city will be involved in litigation regardless of what we choose. And I want to follow up on that point a little bit more, because it seems to me that if the city becomes the successor agency, if we choose to proceed on that route, there are very clear, quantifiable liabilities that we know now that we will be taking on. In addition to that, there are significant potential liabilities that are, as of now, unquantifiable. And I want to talk a little bit about the unquantifiable ones first. As a successor agency, I assume that the city then steps into the shoes of the CRA as a defendant in litigation that would be brought under SEQA, under reliance arguments, under all sorts of things like that, that a developer might be able to bring against the CRA if the project doesn't go forward. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And we, as of now, have no real ability to measure what those potential damages might be in the wide array of projects that are currently in progress or potentially in progress under the CRA, at least in this limited timeframe that you have before we have to make a decision. There's no way realistically to quantify that, is there?
You can't measure them. I believe you have good arguments that, at the end of the day, to the extent that those liabilities relate to, this is very complicated, but to the extent that those liabilities relate to the corpus of assets that are CRA assets, you ought, no guarantees, you ought to be able to spread them and have them be an enforceable obligation. But the risk is that because the way the money is transferred from the accounts every six months, it's quite possible that there will be a judgment against the city as the named defendant, and there won't be money there to pay it, and you will be having to write a check, and you will then either be chasing the county or the schools in litigation to try to get your money back, and you might not succeed.
And before you begin, Mr. Miller, let me just ask the follow-up question on my time, so you see you can ask. Any liability that the city incurs in litigation is paid as an obligation of the city, it has a burden on the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, the CRA carries insurance. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's about $75 million this year of liability insurance, and there's past insurance every year. So to the extent that a claim related back to the year in which the insurance was, there might be insurance for the claim. Depends. And to the extent that the claim related to something the Oversight Board did with respect to termination of contracts, it's very unlikely that that insurance would be there to backstop the claim.
Thank you, Councilwoman Krikorian.
Just to finish this thought, Mr. President. So on the insurance issue, we won't be able, we can't say today that we can rely on the CRA's insurance to cover the city's liability. And just to follow up on that, as of today, before any additional liabilities that may arise out of the dissolution of the CRA, the CRA itself has made the decision that its potential liabilities could be as high as $75 million, because that's the amount of insurance that they've chose to acquire. Is that a fair summary?
As to the first compound question, as to the first part, I think it's not, we can't say for sure. It may be available, it may not be available.
We don't know as...
Thank you, Councilwoman Krikorian. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Councilwoman Zion.
Thank you. There's an item on the agenda today regarding a project in my district that was supposed to be funded, and somehow, through a glitch in the clerk's office, it wasn't put on before the holiday. And now it's on the schedule today. I think it's item 11, if I'm not mistaken. What happens with a project like that? And what happens with the other projects that we have in the corridor of Canova Park and Reseda that are somewhere in the pipeline with this transition taking place?
Councilmember, if your contract was signed before June 29th by the CRA, it can be implemented by the Oversight Agency, and there is the power in the Oversight Agency under the legislation to continue to oversee development of properties until the contractual work is completed or the staff work is transferred. So the staff work gets to be done, the Oversight Board would have discretionary, have approval over any discretionary action, and the Oversight Board would have fiduciary duty to the holder of the enforceable obligation, the other party on the contract. But the Oversight Board also has the power to try to wind things down. So I think there's a great deal of uncertainty as to what happens with development deals in progress.
The problem is, we've made promises and commitments to communities throughout this region of Los Angeles, Resede and Canova Park in particular, which were promised after the earthquake. And one of the projects, item 11, is the Reseda Theater. That was abandoned theater for decades. And finally, we have an individual who was ready to go, we were ready to sign the documents, it was moving forward. And through this glitch, it didn't get approved. Now it's on the agenda for today. So do I tell Reseda that we're going to walk away? Or is there some way to complete those projects that are in the pipeline? This wasn't approved back in June or July, we're talking about approval in December. So there's those that are, you know, pending in the future. I know Mr. Weston has a huge project that's underway, Pico Boulevard in Venice, that's already in place. What do we tell these folks who've been working with us, and in this particular case, for decades, to do something about this eyesore in Reseda, which is a boarded-up old theater? Do we just say, you know, "Sorry, folks," and walk away, and then disappoint all of them? Because I, for one, think that we have an obligation to live up to our word, and we tell people we're going to do something. And whatever the government wants to do with the mixing of money and things, we're betraying the people who've held with us and trusted us to deliver a project to help spark community.
Well, I think I'll address the last part of your question first. No, you're not. The state did.
You're not what?
No, you're not betraying these people. The state did.
The state betrayed them.
The bottom line is that certainly, regardless of whether or not you become the successor agency, the CRA and this body is going to try to put as much as possible on the enforceable obligations list. In the particular case of your project, if there's no contract in place, there is no enforceable commitment in place, quite frankly, it's not very likely that that's going to be recognized. But in the final analysis, that decision is going to be made by the Oversight Board, of which you have two of five votes, five of which are going to oppose you. And even if you can convince the Oversight Board, the State Department of Finance and State Controller, who gets basically 50% of it to offset their obligation to the schools, can step in and say, "No, do over." So you have not betrayed these people, the state has.
But the people that betrayed by the state.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zion.
The state that betrayed the people.
Next speaker, Councilwoman Krikorian. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm going to have to split questions and comments into a number of different points, and so I'm going to try to just chart out the way that I'm going to go about, one, just making some general comments first, which will probably gobble up at least three minutes. And then I'm going to go into some specifics about redevelopment and the decision before us, and then also some questions about my particular area in Hollywood, Westlake, and East Hollywood. I think the most important point that was made at the table, and that many have restated, is that we do know that redevelopment, as we know it, is over. For some, that's a cause for celebration; for some, it's a painful thing to hear. Certainly for us in Hollywood, we recently got the statistics that in the last 10 years, we've increased tax increment and economic output in that area. We think maybe more than any other neighborhood in the state, there's one in San Jose that may rival it by 475% in a decade. What has that meant? That's meant that not only have we been able to pay off the bonds that allowed us to do that, but there's been money for libraries, and police officers, and firefighters throughout the city, there's people on Hollywood Boulevard and Sunset Boulevard, where there used to be shuttered storefronts. Has the redevelopment agency always done everything perfectly or right? Absolutely not, and we need to be loud critics, and we were along the way when we saw misuse or bad projects. But at the same time, we have to come to terms with that, that redevelopment, as we know it, is over. And that's a painful moment. It's a difficult thing for a lot of folks, and most, you know, in the most microscopic ways, for the employees that have given their lives to redevelopment, and who have looked at turning around neighborhoods and work closely with communities. That cannot come easy, and I know there's tremendous insecurity for you right now, something that we need to address as a policy body. For communities who have projects that are queued up, like Mr. Zion has mentioned, there is a moment and a feeling of betrayal. And, you know, we can say it's the state, but it's everybody. I mean, there's going to be a feeling, "Why didn't we finally get what we were due?" In South Los Angeles, where a lot of the redevelopment areas were never drawn with much tax increment, it's been a decades-old puzzle. In other parts, you know, in the Valley, in other parts where we've seen in the city the promise that that would happen, there's still too many places that are left undone. So in the last minute of this opening, I think the second thing that I'd want to hit, and that I hope, recommendation six, which is a very vague one right now, does not go unheeded, is this is a moment for all of us. It's a moment of reimagination, a moment of reinvigoration, and if we look at what our needs of our communities and our constituents are first, forget what bureaucracies and programs we've set up, we need to make sure, as we get money back from the tax increment that will come to the city, that we not just put it into retiring debt and deficits, but that we look at reimagining and reconsolidating, as Mr. Smith, Mr. Engler's predecessor, and I and others have talked about, about bringing economic development together finally in the city in a new way. Community Development Department, our proprietaries, the CRA, our housing agencies have all stimulated in different ways economic development. But if this city is truly going to be at the cutting edge of a new economy, and recruit and incubate those important parts of our economy, we have to take this moment to make sure that money doesn't just go towards retiring your debt, because we will look back 20 years from now and say, "When redevelopment ended, why didn't we do what other cities did to reinvent themselves and to make sure that those new economy industries were here?" Time's up, but I'll continue in a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have Councilman Rosendahl, Councilman Weezer, and four more speakers after that. Just wanted to be cognizant of our time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate my colleagues and all the questions they're asking. First of all, I think it's totally irresponsible of what the governor did. When you have projects halfway through, or whatever the story is, you don't stop them. And there's 18,000 other jobs. Forget the 200 employees from the CRA. That's important. But there's jobs out there, and there are projects underway. So it is irresponsible action by our governor to stop things in midstream. So I'm pretty upset about it. I have no redevelopment projects in my district, okay? The 11th District, the Mr. Engler's District, and Mr. Coretta's District, we don't have any projects in there. But when I first got elected, I asked, "How many areas do we have projects?" "Oh, 31." Now I hear there's 77 projects that are happening, some 18,000 people, plus the 200 people with the CRA. So what I think he just did was wrong. Wrong not for the idea of the education and this other stuff, but when things are on track, you don't stop things. It ends up costing more money to restart it, okay? So, Governor, you're wrong on this as an action. So let me just ask a couple of quick questions. Of those projects, how many are actually digging in the dirt, and people wearing hard hats and doing stuff? How many of these projects are in stream? I'd like an answer on that.
The CRA recommendation?
Chris Essel, could you come up too, please?
I don't have an exact number. It's probably somewhere in the range of 20 to 30 projects that are actually under construction.
23 projects are actually digging the dirt?
20 to 30, yes. That includes affordable housing projects and commercial industrial developments.
20 to 30. Ms. Essel, could you share with us exactly where we are in midstream right now? Obviously, we have to take actions. The courts have acted. We have to figure out what's in the best interest of the projects, the 18,000 employees, and of course, your 200 employees. How many are happening right now? What's the status?
We...
Please identify yourself, Ms. Essel.
Please identify yourself. Chris Essel, CEO of the CRA LA for a few more weeks. So we identified all the projects that were enforceable obligations in a schedule that's part of your report that you received. The exact number of projects, it's probably a couple hundred.
I'd like to know the exact number. These are real people, these are real dollars, these are real projects.
Well, we have, for instance, like 50 business assistance programs in there, and there's 1,500 items on the enforceable obligations payment schedule. There's 1,500 items on our enforceable obligations payment schedule. That also includes payments to contractors and to other agreements that we have. So we have, on this list in front of you, is 86 projects, in terms of serious projects. CRA LA investment of $322 million, and a total development cost of about $4 billion.
How many people...
Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. Please, Mr. President, again.
I want to know more of that as time goes on.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, a quick question. If we elect to be the successor agency, is there a sunset clause to that, or do we, it exists only until it fulfills its mission?
The successor agency will continue for so long as there's redevelopment projects, but over time, all that will be left to be done is simply writing checks to the bondholders who did redevelopment bonds. So theoretically, it could remain in place as an administrative function for 20 years. But can I just clarify? The Oversight Board, after, I think it's three years, they get joined so that there's one per...
2016.
So there's 2016, so there's one per county.
Got you. So on the question of liabilities, should we be the successor agency, where it goes to employee salaries and pension costs and healthcare costs, wouldn't we only have to pay that until the successor agency comes and goes, and let's say, a year, two years? So would some of the costs that have been pointed out be a bit inflated?
Well, I think what was just said is that the successor agency will go on for a period of time, and it will continue through until we pay our last bond.
And how long would that be?
Some bonds are as long as 25...
Yeah, but the actual work for employees is only so long. I mean, they're not there sitting until the, you know, New York and the bond agencies decide to move the bond. I mean, the actual work that the employees would have to be is very limited...
That is correct.
...to move those projects forward. That could be a year or two. So that's the time then we could tell ourselves, "Well, as a city, we see value in moving these projects forward, that perhaps we should encumber our general fund, just like we would anything else." anything else, and pay those salaries and those pension costs for a year or two until we move these projects forward. So it's not an either-or situation, as I think the memo put it out to be.
Well, because we don't know what projects the Oversight Committee will approve right now, we can't, we have no idea what projects they will approve, we can't tell you, based on the list of projects, how long that's going to go. So the authority lies in the Oversight Committee. And so once they establish the sort of the work plan, then at that point, a better determination could be made in terms of the size of the workforce that would be needed, as well as the length of time that you need that workforce. But today, we don't know what that is.
And that goes to the inquantifatal risks that were raised. My point before I'm cut off here in my next round is, as well, I think Mr. Cardenas and Ms. Perry raised the issues about whether it's clear or not what type of liabilities we are taking on, the quantifiable ones. And I think that needs a bit more clarification. I'm not sure if we, when the answers I heard, there's not a lot of certainty as to whether that's the correct answer or not. That all seems to be a little bit gray still. Is that correct?
The liabilities you would take on as the successor are indeed, many of them are unquantifiable at this point. With respect to what liabilities you take on, if you're not the successor, it's clear that your liabilities would not increase over those that you already have by virtue of the fact that you're the city.
Consul Wiesar, the last question.
Last question. Finally, on our, the assets of the CRA, undeveloped land that the CRA owns, those working with a developer to move forward but didn't move forward, what happens to those assets in both scenarios, successor, and if we elect not to be the successor?
What the law says is that those assets will be sold as expeditiously as possible. However, what we are researching is how those assets were acquired, and to the extent that they were acquired either through grants, or with HUD monies, or other things which have contractual limitations on the ability to sell and keep and distribute the money as tax increment, we are researching that to try to figure that out. And we will have to go parcel by parcel. There are 400 parcels, that is something that will happen over the next several months.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Consul Alarcon, Consul Perry. Thank you.
I am, first of all, not ready to say that we should abolish our relationship with CRA to the extent that we do not become the successor agency. We have two more days to think this through, and I think we should use every minute of those two days before making a decision. I am concerned that the city, first of all, faces liability no matter what, that if we do not become the successor agency, I believe we will be dragged into litigation because we struck most of these agreements, if not all of them. And if any is violated, I believe we would be a party to lawsuits, and in any case, a developer, or a union, or other parties would just throw us into the lawsuit that they would file for the same reason that you are recommending that we not participate, because you don't know, because of the uncertainty. So nobody's giving me an assessment of what is our litigation liability. In other words, the cost of litigation could be problematic. Secondly, I am not convinced that we would not have more control as a successor agency over what the Oversight Board does by virtue of the fact that since we made the original agreements, we would have a much better negotiating ability because we understood the original agreement. Thirdly, if the city wanted to sue, I believe that we could sue if we believe that the contractual obligations that we entered into were not adhered to by the Oversight Board. So I think for all those reasons, all those things need to be more fully explored, and like I said, we should use every minute of the day until the last minute to get more analysis on those issues at a minimum. Finally, I don't understand why we took an action, or the ERC recommended, that we lay off anybody. If the recommendation is going to be that we don't want to be the successor agency, then why are we acting like the successor agency by authorizing a layoff? I think we should just leave that issue alone until there's a definitive successor agency identified. But right now, I don't think the city should be participating in any form with the action of the state. And I think to ask for layoffs is tantamount to saying, okay, we're going to go along with the game plan. No, we're not going along with the game plan. We disagree. We should fight for these city employees. We should fight for the projects. We should fight in court if necessary. But this isn't over. We should not be fatalistic about this. We need to continue to press forward, and hopefully, something will come down in the way of legislation, in the way of clarification from legal analysts. But we should not be fatalistic today. Let's continue to fight the fight.
Thank you, Consul Alarcon. Our next speaker, Consul Perry, then Consul McCrory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And let me begin where I left off before. At this point, it seems clear that unless the state adopts clarifying language, it does not benefit the city to become a successor agency. I don't want to get caught in a financial trap. But if we, as a body, determine that there is no choice but to opt out, I wanted to repeat what I said upstairs, to make a motion to the CLA and the CAO to report back to us on models that are utilized in other major cities. I'm especially interested in New York City as an economic development corporation. Of course, New York City, I believe, is a city and county funded by a dedicated revenue stream in the city of Chicago, mega department that combines the functions of housing, planning, workforce development, and economic development. I do believe in the work of the Redevelopment Agency. I have at risk over 3,000 construction jobs, 3,500 permanent jobs, and jeopardizing 954 units of affordable housing, and that's just my district alone. The citywide numbers of projects that are at risk is devastating. And I have to say thank you to the staff. They are incredible staff that have transformed the future of our city because of the work that they have done since the beginning of the agency, but in particular, the last four years have been horrendous. The real estate market has been depressed, and it's been extremely difficult to get projects done. I am concerned about the housing assets for the agency. I want to make sure that the affordable housing covenants are enforced and monitored, and that we, as a city, fully utilize properties purchased with housing tax increment funds. So I have this, I'm going to put my questions on the record and then stop. We need to know what it means to transfer these housing responsibilities to LAHD. CRA has been incredible in securing grant money, and I don't want to lose these dollars because we may have, we have to dissolve, but I want to make sure that there is a plan in place that existing secured grants by the CRA, that they go to other city departments, and what the implementation strategy is for that, for honoring every aspect of those agreements. Additionally, the question of existing CRA loans that were issued for pre-development with the intention of converting to permanent financing. There needs to be a mechanism to make these kinds of alterations that do not require new funds, but just require a contract modification. And finally, a comment about what the Board of Supervisors intends to do. If we opt out and they opt out, it bounces to the state, and what happens then?
Thank you very much. Consul McCrory.
I think she wants to.
Does anybody have an answer to the question I want to? Consul Perry, did you expect an answer, or was this more of a report, bud? Please, can someone answer, Consul Perry?
Well, I'll take a stab at a few of them. Again, if it goes to the state, then the governor would appoint three residents of Los Angeles County that would then become the successor agency. Certainly, my hope would be at that point that the state would realize that that is not what they intended. That was a last-ditch effort, and the hope would be that we could actually engage in cleaning this up, and then being able to opt into the successor agency role, which we, where we should be had these issues been addressed. In terms of some of the other grants, and I think it comes down to, and again, the city attorney can address it, but it comes down to the status of the project, and whether there are enforceable obligations involved or not on those. But we would be working very hard to have any of the outstanding grants, you know, reassigned to the city, and to be able to proceed with any of those projects.
Not only with the grants, but, Councilmember, also with respect to the loans you talked about. We have to go through each and every one of these contracts to see what the specific terms of the contract are and what can be done. There is no blanket answer for any of this, and there's an enormous amount of work that's going to be done over the next several months to try to sort through all of these issues. And it depends on each of them, what the contract says.
Okay. Anybody else?
And as far as the county, as was indicated, should the city not be the successor agency, then any taxing district can choose to be the successor entity. Based on the liabilities that have been addressed, the responsibility over the employees, I would be very surprised if the county or any other jurisdiction would opt in to be the Oversight Committee. I mean, not the Oversight, the successor agency.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that with respect to the loans that the city has made, I believe the Housing Department and CDD have been looking at their portfolios to see what obligations are still due and owing from the CRA to the city, and are working to make sure that all of those obligations are included on the EOPS. The other thing is that there are some loans that have been made through CDD, which have been secured by property acquired by the CRA with that loan money. And to the extent that those loans have been secured by property, we would be looking to make sure that that property was preserved and used in an appropriate manner.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Consul McCrory. Then we'll have Consul Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak a moment to Mr. Zian's point about projects that are, that have relied on this, and Mr. Rosenthal's point about the governor pulling the plug in midstream. I certainly feel that pain. In my district, the Laurel Canyon Project area includes Valley Plaza. My single most important economic development priority in the district, one of the most important priorities probably in the San Fernando Valley, that has withered on the vine and died since the earthquake. And throughout that time, we haven't been able to advance the ball. Right now, we're on the precipice of being able to develop that area into a vibrant economic center that's going to make a great positive contribution to the neighborhood and to this city, and the rules are being changed. But the truth is, that's not before us. Those decisions are made. They were made prior to our coming in here today, and there's nothing that we're going to do in this council to change that. So let's keep in mind that the issue before us, the only issue before us, is not whether or not that's good policy. The issue before us is whether or not we want to become the successor agency. And, you know, I've worked well with the CRA in my area. I think we have great programs that are ongoing right now. A facade improvement program that's helping small businesses in the area, a business assistance program to help small businesses hire new people. That's ongoing right now, and the plug is being pulled. And those small businesses are going to suffer. What we need to decide today is whether or not we are going to be able to accept this undefinable risk for what I see as questionable benefit. And I want to talk about the benefit of being the successor agency a little bit. It seems to me that the principal, the tax increment that will be recaptured when redevelopment goes away is going to flow to the city whether or not we are the successor agency, correct?
Correct.
And the only difference in becoming the successor agency will be the administrative allocation that's provided by AB26 to compensate us for some portion of our administrative costs.
Well, I think the CAO and the CLA set out in a couple of pages in their report the incoherent value of the benefit of staying in control, but as policymakers, they weighed that against the financial risk.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that, but as far as the tax increment is concerned, the difference is that administrative reimbursement allocation.
Consul, that's your last question.
Okay.
Please answer.
And then to continue on that point just briefly, what then is the other benefit? What is the benefit of being able to be in an advocacy role as the successor agency that we wouldn't have even if we're not a successor agency? And then related to that, Mr. Miller, you raised the possibility, which I hadn't considered until you just raised it, that even if we opt out today.
Consul member?
There is a possibility that with further legislation or otherwise, we could become a successor agency when the waters have cleared a little bit and we understand the liabilities.
Thank you, Consul McCrory.
Is that correct?
Please answer the question.
Yeah, that would, yes, that would certainly be my hope. Now, I'm sorry, in terms of your other issue about the advocacy role, I mean, you're still the Los Angeles City Council. The fact of the matter is that I think there's been some assertion that, you know, developers will stop dealing with you. That's, unless developers don't plan to do business in the city anymore ever, that's not going to happen. The advocacy role in the context of successor agency is to argue that something has a legally enforceable obligation behind it. It is not advocating for the validity of a project. It's not advocating for jobs creation. It is advocating for whether there is enforceable legal obligation, and that's it.
Thank you. Consul Cardenas? Consul Laban for the first time.
Thank you. Good morning. I just returned from the county. County had a function on the Wosha Boulevard, but in catching up to speed right here, I read the mayor's letter, and it's cleanly put out there. The CAO supports the mayor's letter, the CLA supports the mayor's letter. So unfortunate, fortunate that we have to go through this. But when we look back, I don't know, you know, all of a sudden, this was a collision that was happening, and it has happened. And now, how do we move forward in this? What is, just in the broad thinking, I'm sure you have around your conference room with your teams of people, discussed any future-type economic engine like the CRA has been?
Well, sure. We've talked about a number of things. I think, you know, as Ms. Perry indicated, I think it started, you know, a year or so ago, a nonprofit development corporation pledging some of the additional revenue that we'd be getting because of the dissolution of the CRA to economic development.
Right.
Again, redefining the role of some of the city's functions, which has been tried for literally 25 years. There's probably been three or four efforts at economic development consolidation.
How old is our CRA?
1948.
Forty-eight.
Yeah.
Right. And Bunker Hill Project, which is 1950 project, or whatever, Mayor Paulson, I think, instituted the toughest thing, was putting the land together.
Technically, still an active project. It started out as an urban renewal project back in the '50s.
In the '50s. And then John Farrell, the late president of the council, said the toughest job was putting the land together. And for years, that land stood. And for years, the land stood, and then something happened. Mr. Bradley, and Mr. Lindsay, and others at the time, created this atmosphere of development, and there were starts and stops. And now, we're near the end of that. I know in Mr. Garcetti's efforts with the success of the subway system in Hollywood has transformed the agency to have success at Hollywood, Hollywood Highland, Hollywood and Vine. In my district, where the Orange Line meets the subway, there's success. And there's a planning matter with those very important transit systems to help spur this activity. So all I'm saying, there has been some success with this, but the Supreme Court, which is the court, and no city's challenging the Supreme Court to go to the district court at all, correct? No. The game's over. Okay, so now we have a fait complet. Is there any adjustment, just to think, just thinking of, and I know it's too early, but I know, and it's different times, some years ago when we were in tough straits, there was a lot of reorganization, and you placed people at Water and Power, at other places where they were appropriate, but there's no spots for these people at this time, as you see it, if you look that far at all. Is there any vacancies within the Planning Department, Transportation Department, that these people may qualify for, that they would meet some?
Consul Laban has the last question.
Yeah.
Please answer the question.
Councilman Laban, our situation is such that we're going to have a challenge maintaining our own workforce this time.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Consul Laban. Consul Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I ask my question, I'd like to add that we add language
Before I ask my question, I'd like to add that we add language to the item before us that says this. All departments are instructed to report to the CAO and CLA by close of business on Friday, any contracts they have with the CRA and any payments due to them from the CRA. Okay? Little bit of housekeeping there? Now, before AB 26 and AB 27, how much tax increment came to the city of Los Angeles that we afforded ourselves the use through the CRA department?
It's about two--
What was that figure?
About 240 million. About gross of about $240 million.
Approximately 240 million. And now that AB 26 has been sustained and the actions of the legislature, that has been reduced by 80%, correct?
Well, the 80% figure refers to the administrative cap in the legislation compared to the current rate of expenditures for administration.
Okay, I'm sorry. So how much is going to continue to come to the city regardless of what action we take today? In terms of tax increment that otherwise used to be a portion of the 240 million?
On an ongoing basis, that number would be about $18 million a year.
Okay. And what's the 50-plus million dollar figure that we've been talking about?
That would be our share of funds that are sitting on hand. So that would be a one-time inflow of funds.
Okay.
But on the ongoing basis, we're looking at around 18 a year.
It's important to note on that front is that to the extent to which the Oversight Committee does not approve particular projects, then the city's portion, as I've shown in that pie chart, will increase. So in some ways, so it's, that was, the number that we established of the 18 million is assuming that everything gets approved.
That all the actions that we took prior are sustained.
Correct.
Yes, Chris?
I'll just add that the analysis that we worked on together went out for three years, and as our enforceable obligations are paid off, your tax increment share is going to grow over the course of time.
Our usable share.
As we pay off loans.
Our uncommitted share.
Your uncommitted share. So in the fourth year out, it's going to be, I'm assuming it's going to go up, but we just can't project that right now.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on the numbers because, again, a lot of the liability and the consternation has to do with what are the, what are the numbers and what are we left with and how much those numbers actually will not, will protect us from adversely affecting our general fund. My time is up, so I'll push my button again. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cardenas, just for the sake of clarity, the added language, was it going, where did you want to send that out? Where did you want to?
Well, it's an instruction to all departments. I don't know if we want to do it as a separate instruction. I think that's a pretty easy one for us to make.
Okay.
Or we can just add it, add that language to the--
Mr. Clancy.
--any motion that's subsequent that we vote on, on this item.
Okay. Just for the sake of clarity, I wanted to make sure that was out there. Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Councilman Garcetti, then Councilman Rosendahl for the second time.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, it was 1955 Bunker Hill, started as a redevelopment area. Tax increment financing will still exist in the city of Los Angeles, just not through redevelopment, or will be completely gone?
That would be your choice. It certainly can still exist, and as you all know, we have done tax increment financing with our own money in many cases all over the city, so--
So the difference is we're just not taking it from state property or--
Exactly.
--property taxes. We would be doing it from our hotel taxes, as we've done LA Live and other things.
Precisely.
If we get clarifying language, I guess this is a lawyer question. If we get clarifying language from the legislature, can we later become the successor agency if we do not become it now?
Unless they fix that part of the language, you may not be able to.
So it's now or never unless the state on top of--
Right.
--other fixes would say, oh--
So part of the clarifying language you would get is that clarification, but you would need to get it.
Okay. Then the inverse of that, if we become the successor agency, can we later dissolve that rule? Can we later put it back into the fray of then going through?
I don't, I don't think so, but I--
So once we make that decision, it is binding no matter what?
You should assume so, yes.
You should assume so. We don't know with--
I can double check that.
Total certainty, okay. So the successor agency, just to be clear, I mean, I think we all know this, but for folks who are listening, it's just for finishing out winding down projects. There is nothing new that can be obligated. Correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
In terms of the range of money, when you said 17 to 20 million or 18 million, you think a year on this, we also would be looking at, I mean, we have this kind of perverse incentive, and I think you're nobly wearing two hats, both the CAO and CLA, because you both want to see our budget balance, but just like the school district and the county, you have an incentive potentially on us not seeing projects go forward because that means money comes to us and helps solve our city's deficit. Is that correct?
That's correct. And wearing exclusively our general fund hat.
But you also have, have a second hat of making sure some of these things, that our good projects are seen through.
That's correct.
Okay. There are some line items that exist right now. I have 30 seconds left, so I'll just go after one of them. There's $8 million over at the Bureau of Engineering right now, and maybe this is for the agency. Ms. Essel?
Chris.
20 seconds, 19 seconds. This may be, this may be an agency question. There's, I think, $8 million the Bureau of Engineering has for various EIRs. I believe those are encumbered but not specified. So if we were to, for instance, we took an action on an EIR, $2 million for an EIR on the Hollywood Cat Park, if the $8 million that's in the Bureau of Engineering right now for EIRs in general, is it your opinion that we would be able to access that money to see through that EIR?
Kelly Lefebvre. Councilwoman Garcetti is particularly interested in the $2 million for the Cat Park, which was something that was approved on a contingent basis. So can we take a portion of the $8 million that's committed--
Yeah, just to be clear, when we did that, we did not necessarily know or focus on there's $8 million that was obligated to the Bureau of Engineering for EIRs.
Will they unwind that? Because that's--
Can some of that be accessed for that?
We can check on that. I think it will depend on whether, what the contract with Bureau of Engineering says and whether the money only is an enforceable obligation once a work order is issued. So we need to double check that.
But again, I think it's important to point out that that's within the jurisdiction of the Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Councilman Weston for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. First, I would like to say just how much I appreciate all of the work that Chris Essel and the CRA employees' staff has done, and that it has been a pleasure to work with you. I think we need to recognize that the CAO and CLA staff have worked nonstop on this issue for probably over a few weeks. Mr. Cardenas, I think, has chaired this, as the chairman, has done a yeoman's job in bringing us to this point. The reality of the situation is the CRA, as we know it, is dead. It is dead. There is no, and I think it's time for us to take it, take it off of the machine. So what I would recommend, and if there, I know there are other people in the queue, and we should allow them to speak if they choose to, but members, I suggest that we take a vote, we take a vote today, to vote indicating that the city of Los Angeles will not become the successor agency. I also request that we immediately begin working with the legislature to try to come up with some kind of language that elevates our comfort level and will also give us an opportunity at a later date if we choose. The way that it is configured now, I agree with the CLA, I agree with the CAO. It is not in our best interest, but we can at least begin discussions with some of our friendly colleagues in the state to try to come up with a way where we can opt back in. So if we can vote indicating, sending a message that we will not become the successor agency, and if there's a way to tie in the request where it relates to some clarification language and sacramental, that would give us an opportunity to opt back in. So I would hope, members, I could get a second on that. Mr. Zine, second. Mr. Reese, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weston. We have four more colleagues on the queue. We have Councilman Rosendahl, Alarcon Corrigan, and Garcetti. Councilmember.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Weston, for your leadership on this. I had asked a question. David, you're back up there. How many projects are we involved in right now that have people with hard hats on that are in construction?
We have approximately 29 projects under construction that represent close to 5,000 construction jobs that we are monitoring and doing compliance work on. There's also a number of projects that we expect to break ground in the next six to nine months.
Okay.
Probably another 10 projects that would be breaking--
Okay, let's just stay with the 29 you have. The 29 you have has some 5,000 people employed. How much money are all these things worth add up?
Um--
Okay, while you're thinking that through, let me just ask you this. The oversight of those projects, I do not want this governor to stop projects that are in construction right now. Can we stop that from happening?
Projects that are under construction have enforceable obligations attached to them, so assuming they don't run into problems or cost overruns, they should, they should move forward and be completed.
So the 29 projects with the 5,000 employees will go forward until they're done?
Till they're done, yes. We may, they may encounter problems along the way, but right now, they should go to--
And how far are those other 10 in the pipeline, and would we be litigated against if we didn't go forward with them?
Well, those will also have enforceable obligations attached to them, so they should also go forward under construction and be completed as well.
Mm-hmm. And going forward, we talk about affordable housing, which is something--
Most of what's in our pipeline now is affordable housing. We have a few projects that are obviously are not, such as the Broad Museum is not our affordable housing project. We have a number of projects that are public improvement projects that we're working in conjunction with the city on, but most of what's in our pipeline right now is affordable housing projects.
I see. Okay. Mr. Guthrie, do you have any comments on this stuff going on here, since you're the oversight of both of those departments? Could you come up for one quick second? Just hold my time for this. Just to let him react, I mean, he is our top guy on this housing business here, and obviously affordable housing is important to all of us here, and I'd just like to see his quick reaction to where we're at and any guidance or advice that you might have for us. Thank you.
Yes, Doug Guthrie, I'm here, I believe, in my role as general manager of the Housing Department. We've been working very closely with CRA, with CAO, and with the CLA's office over the last few weeks to, to go through our inventory of affordable housing developments that we have. Much of what we do, CRA also does. So we're joined at the hip on a number of these developments. They, and it covers a broad range, everything from projects that are nearing completion to projects that are committed to and ready to close and everything in between. So we've been going through that list of enforceable obligations. We're going to maximize that list to the extent that we possibly can. I believe that there'll be an opportunity to come back before council to discuss the issue with regards to transfer of the low moderate income aspects of CRA to the Housing Department. I believe there'll be an opportunity to do that over the next two weeks.
Yeah, that is an important point to make, if it hasn't been made earlier. This is not the election for housing purposes. That is a separate action. The deadline for that is the end of the month, so that will be coming back to you. That is, that's a separate action.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Councilman Alarcon, then Corrigan, Councilwoman Corrigan, and Councilman Garcetti.
Councilmembers, I fear that we may be moving too quickly. Like I said, this is, I think, the vast majority of council members have stood up and spoken for all the benefits of the CRA and all the projects that would be diminished should we not move forward with the agency. I recognize the peril that has been described by the CLA and the CAO with regard to their concerns of the successor agency status. I just think it's, it's too quick. My staff was notified at 5:39 of the CLA and CRA and CAO's report yesterday, and of course, the mayor's letter came out after 9 o'clock. So up until that point, I was under the impression that we were exploring every possible, possibility to continue to be a successor or to be the successor agency. We have two days, and I don't understand what the urgency is for us to vote today that we do not want to become the successor agency. A lot has transpired in the last 24 hours. I believe a lot more can transpire in terms of analysis and information, particularly legal analysis, in the next 48 hours. And I think we ought to take advantage of that so that whatever we decide on Friday, it will at least have the benefit of additional information. With all due respect to my favorite president, I strongly believe we should wait a couple of days.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcetti. Is there a second on the motion? Councilman Alarcon's motion, is there a second?
I don't think it moved anything. He didn't move anything.
It sounded like a motion to me, okay.
I thought that was your favorite council president.
Okay, okay, there's a, there's a debate now who's the favorite council president.
Yeah, last week. That was your favorite council president, last week.
Councilman Garcetti.
Thank you. Let me say a couple of statements, a couple of questions, and make a motion just on a specific report back. You know, I don't see the risk as quite as high as is described, and I've had a lot of respect for what's been said at the table. I think it is closer to what, what we heard, that it's more like about $30 million of risk. It could be, of course, 109, but I think there's pretty clear language on, on 79-ish million of it. For the $30 million of risk, what time period is that over? Or is that per year?
We don't know. That's part of the challenge because it's based on how long we have to maintain that workforce. We know that the 30 million, if we would maintain the workforce at the existing level for the next year, it's $30 million next year.
And whatever portion then the workforce was not there each year after that, it would go down proportionally?
That's correct.
All right. Land that is owned right now, what happens to that? I can think in Hollywood, there's, we have a park, for instance, in La Marada Park area. That's, the CRA is not paying for the development of the park, that's Prop 84, but they own it. They also own a parcel, former KFC on Vine Street. Could those pieces actually be taken away, sold off, and we not get the proceeds, and that land never be conveyed?
Land that is owned for public purposes like parks and fire stations can be retained if the city can pay for them.
Okay, and we do in this case. We're developing it right now, I just want to make sure. But another piece, which was more for, it was originally for the development of a museum with the Motion Picture Academy, they still own it--
Right.
--but we want to use it possibly for a neighborhood park or something of that sort. What happens to that parcel of property?
That parcel, unless it was acquired with HUD funds or some other grant funds that place restrictions on how it can be sold, is going to be sold by the successor agency.
And where does the money go?
The money will be split up amongst the schools, the county, and the city.
So those sorts of properties will for sure be sold by the successor agencies?
I think pretty much for sure. There's no for sure.
Even if they, even if they are obligated for a program of some sort? Like right now--
Unless, unless there, unless there's a consigned contract that you can take to a court and get a court to enforce, they're not--
I'll have to check whether we signed anything with the Motion Picture Academy or not on that one. I'd like to get a report back on the question I asked earlier about whether Bureau of Engineering money, which has been put, which was obligated for environmental impact reports, can be used for, in this case, the Hollywood Cat Park environmental impact report. And, you know, I think also wanted, just to be clear, one last thing in the last 26 seconds, if the risk is $30 million per year as it is right now, if we're the successor agency, we would have the first authority on staffing or layoffs of those folks? So we could lay off 100% of them and have zero obligation the following year? Or is that, somebody else have that authority?
No, the successor agency would be responsible to absorb the employees and all, and the existing MOU. The existing MOU establishes a 120-day period. And so the, sort of the awkwardness that we're facing right now is that the direction is currently given by ERC as it relates to employee relations for the CRA, as was done yesterday. But the actual layoff will occur after February 1st, once that successor agency-- So should the city be the successor agency, then the city would be the one moving for, proceeding in that process or finishing up that layoff process. If the city is not the successor agency, then it will be the-- If the city is not the successor agency, then it will be whoever is the successor agency or that three-person panel appointed by the governor.
And there's a very last thing I've got to say, Mr. President, is the possibility, though, that that $30 million is not a hit to the general fund? We just don't know. It's not that it for sure is a hit to the general fund. It may be able to be taken by tax increment, it just has to be approved by the board.
No, the question is, is that the legislation specifies how much administrative dollars we receive, and so based on...
The delta between?
Yes, so that's a delta in between that and the new tax increment money that we receive, the 18 million, that's where it creates the 30 million.
Our last speaker, Councilman Kukoryn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my questions have been dealt with, but I just want, as a point of information, I wanted to ask Mr. Wesson whether your motion includes approval of item number 14A as well as item 1A in the committee recommendation.
Yes, yes. Mr. Clerk, can you please let us know what is before us? What does yes mean, what is no? We had public comment during committee?
Mr. President, before moving ahead, I might advise you that item, excuse me, that motion 14C has now been circulated and is before you as well. That's motion Perry Rosendale, which requests a number of report backs. Again, that has recently been circulated and is now before you. In terms of Mr. Wesson's motion, essentially, that would move item 1A from the committee And in addition to that, there is, Mr. Cardenas put forth what would now be a motion, since we're not voting on it, or an additional recommendation, to the committee report to instruct all departments to report prior to the end of business on this Friday, any contracts they have with the CRA and any payments due the CRA, if somebody would care to second that as well.
So a second is needed? There's a second by Councilman Wesson? Mr. Clerk, so I want to make sure that we're all focused on what we're going to vote on, so can you go down, step by step, what's in front of us? Can you tell me what a yes vote means?
On the Bureau of Engineering environmental impact, I asked for a report back as well on whether money that was allocated to the Bureau of Engineering for...
For the DIR support?
Yeah.
Very good.
Could be used for the Hollywood Cat Park.
And again, if there's a second there on that motion, we could include that as well.
A second by Councilmember Englander? Okay, we have enough seconds, so let's please share with us what is in front of us, step by step, what yes means, what no means.
Very good. We can take three. Actually, I guess the motions are all friendly, so we can vote on one matter, or we can vote on them all together. We have motion 14C, which is the Perry Rosendale motion, and that has been circulated, which requires, or requests a number of report backs.
Okay, open the roll on that item, 14C. Close the roll. This is 14C. These are report backs. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Very good. Mr. President, we now have the report backs that were put forth by Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Cardenas as well.
Another set of report backs. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Mr. Clerk, next item?
Lastly, we have Mr. Wesson's motion.
Can you please summarize that?
Mr. Wesson put forth the motion to not, excuse me, for the city to not become the successor agency and to immediately begin working with legislation for language that would elevate the city's comfort level and preserve the opportunities to opt back in.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, please?
If I could, to be clear, I think what you need to do is adopt 1A and 2 through 7 of the CAO-CLA report and 14A.
Okay, and that would capture Councilman Wesson's goals?
That would opt out as successor agency and include the other recommendations in the report.
That's all encompassing. Thank you.
Pardon me, before doing that, again, for clarification, item 14A as referenced is the resolution that would accompany 1A.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 eyes, 3 noes.
That's approved, sir.
That's approved? Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us back to item number 1, called Special for Cards.
Okay, item number 1, for cards, we have Mr. John Walsh and Michael Miller. Will you please come to the microphone, that we call your name? Mr. Walsh and Mr. Miller.
I would wait till this garbage cleared.
Fourth with, on item 14 as well?
Very good, sir.
Yes.
This is an item, hollywoodhighlands.org. You want to know what's really going on, or Google Walsh Confidential. This is a hearing protest against a proposed improvement in maintenance of the Valerio Street and Lubal Avenue revalid, lighting district, and we are 100% in favor of this. And I'd just like to point out, Mr. Rosendale's word is a man, that he would declare this special. You are not a man, Mr. Rosendale, you broke your word. Garbage.
All right, now we have the next, Mr. Miller. Michael Miller. Thank you, that completes the public comment. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we've completed public comment, there's no one on the speaker queue.
Mr. President, would you like us to open the roll?
Hold on just a second. We don't have a card, Sergeant, we have no cards for these gentlemen who stood up. We have no cards. So that's it, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, do you have a question? Okay, there's no speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, you want to open the roll on this?
Very good, sir.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Next item?
That brings us to item 8, called Special for Cards.
Thank you.
Hi, I represent my parents, who owns the property on 372-376 Los Angeles Street, which is right next to the development that's going to happen. The airspace vacating part, we were not opposed at all. However, last public hearing, we were able to see the design of the development, the future development, and we're concerned toward where the entrance and exit of the parking lot is situated at. We feel like all the traffic will be directed into the alley, and the alley will actually not only have the present merchants and customers, but also the future retail place with all the customers going, and we're really concerned, and we'd like to urge or encourage Councilwoman Perry to speak to the developer, to encourage for the entrance or the exit to be partially from the main avenues, which is either Forest Street or Los Angeles Street.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments on this issue here. The council office will work with you and try to find the best resolution. All right, no other speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
And if I got to ask council district staff to visit with these, yeah, thank you. Next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 11, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sachs here? Mr. Sachs is not here. Mr. Eager? Yeah, thank you, thank you. What are we going to do with this, with this project now? Dennis Zine's project? Excuse me, your name, sir? What's your name?
Amayan Eager. Figure it out for yourself. All right. Amayan Eager. Am I?
All right, hold on, hold your clock, please, hold your clock. For the Sergeant of Arms, just check some names, they're not the same names that they've projected before for the future. Thank you, come to the public comment, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, just for the orderly conduct of the meeting, but look, the CRA is dead. In case you haven't heard, Herb Wesson said it really quietly, but this is a CRA project, it's dead. See, now here's the problem. Hey, and the wicked witch is dead. Chris Essel. So here's the problem, the city needs to get like Chris Essel and slim right down. Gaunt even is how I would describe her. So she got problems.
Excuse me, direct your comments to the chair and don't make personal comments. Keep going.
There's another one for the book, that's a mistake. I'm not even doing anything wrong, you don't, whatever, you've got no idea, let me talk about the project without getting the interference. Now it's over, now here's the problem that I see moving forward. Dennis Zine, shutter it back up. Who cares right now? The city needs to slim down, get fit, lose the fat that we've got up here right now, and get the city back into the basic things that the people want, like trash collection and pothole repairs and public safety and police. The days of worrying about blight are over. So shutter up Reseda. Shutter it back up, just leave it for now. It's over, this, you know, I'm so happy, because, see, this is what happened, that there's going to be problems with these projects in the future, and you're going to get sued because we talked about it, Zuma Dogg talked about it so many times, he was right. They're all front-end loaded, front-end loaded projects, and all the executives took all the money, so there will be cost overruns, and you are committed to that, and there will be lawsuits, and they're going to come for you, because people like Chris Essel took all the money and they gave it to all their cronies.
All right, Mr. Wan?
Yes, yes, I've been to your meetings about three or four times, and every time I come, all I hear is how much money of the people's money keeps getting wasted in tremendous amounts. You know how many people you could house with all the monies that you waste day by day? It's incredible. You need a new way of thinking. Your thinking is archaic. Your contractors, subcontractor, kickbacks, all that is a thing of the past. Occupy LA was telling you, you need a new way of thinking. And if not, it's going to kick you right in the ass, because people are tired. You know, they're tired of you wasting their money. Do you get that idea? The middle class is here protesting now.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Please repeat that, Mr. City Attorney.
A very wasteful way of doing business. We need a new way of doing business. You're not doing it right.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. This concerns a loft, John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Go check us out, or Google Walsh Confidential. Reseda Theater Loft's mixed-use project, which will go through no matter what happens, because although the CRA is dead, and take it off the machine, I'm Coney City Council, 1948 to 2012, February 1st. I was five years old when the CRA was born, and I'm proud to say I never thought I'd outlive the CRA, but I have. And I'd just like to say that because the Reseda Housing, Loft Housing, the Supreme Court unanimously decided, 7 to 0, to kill the CRA. What would have happened if they had voted unanimously the other way? There would have been a $2 billion hole in this year's budget. There would have been chaos throughout the state. We would have lost four to weeks, to eight weeks of the school, of school, all elementary. We would have had to close down junior colleges. We would have had to shut down universities. This is the chaos that would have happened if they had not followed Brown. Now Garcetti's not here, Rosendale's not here. The people, the good people are here. Everybody up, sitting here now, I like. Everybody sitting up here, I like. I just want to say, and it includes you, Mr. Labange. The evil ones are out. In fact, we are the same...
Mr. President, he is not talking about this matter.
Die, die, my darling, CRA gone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, there's no speakers on the queue. Hold on, Mr. City Attorney, you want to, for the record, state what you want to state? No, no speakers are on the queue.
Mr. President, my understanding is that this matter would best be referred back to committee rather than having it acted on because of the Monsanto's decision?
Very good, okay. Based on the City Attorney's recommendation, I'm going to rule that unless anybody has any other ideas. Push your button, Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine?
Now, this is the Reseda Theater, which I brought up during the discussion, which we were told is not going to go anywhere. So you recommend we send it back to committee? If that's the case, if that'll benefit to keep it alive?
Your options would seem to be to continue it, to send it back to committee, or to note and file it?
I don't want a note and file it. I don't want to betray, let the governor betray the committee, I'm not going to do that, I don't think this body wants to do that. So send it back to committee, would be my record.
Or continue it.
Let's send it back to committee.
All right, so ordered, send back to committee. Next item?
Second by Mr. Alakon.
Mr. President, would you like to do that without objection?
Mr. Rosendale?
I just want to, I don't want to be confused. The project in my district, this is only...
This is just the Reseda Theater matter.
Okay, so the rest moves forward.
Only Reseda Theater.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hold on a second. Mr. Clerk, for the benefit of the council, tell us what's before us.
Mr. President, if I'm not mistaken, you sent referred item 11 back to committee without objection? Did you want to open the floor?
That's it, so that's okay. Back to committee, back to, that's what we're doing, Mr. Alakon.
So that would bring us to item 18, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sachs? Matt Dow, you have one minute, Mr. Dow.
Do I have a card on 19? I think I got 19, I'll save it for 19.
This is 18, thank you very much. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Next item?
Mr. President, if I may, item 18 contains a number of ordinance, it says those will go over for one week.
Very good, unless another member returns. Thank you. Next?
That brings us to item 19, called Special for Cards.
Okay. Mr. Wan? Mr. Wan is not here. Mr. Dow, you have one minute.
Thank you, yes. I'm still here, everyone's gone, I'm still here, because, see, there's a lot of, you know, I guess what you'd call gadflies in the city.
know, I guess what you'd call gadflies in the city. But I've got nothing better to do than come here and expose some of this stuff. But this one, you know, this one's Jan Perry's behind a $6 million bonds, we're raising these multifamily housing bonds to finance a 43-unit multifamily rental housing, Paradise Arms Apartments. Only because it's Jan Perry, I'm going to be in favor of this one because she's the only one who sounds like she has a handle on some of these things, comes up with the good questions, not like Bill Rosendahl, he's like, oh, he wants the tear pieces off the governor, what a waste of time that is. You know, you've got to move forward, the CRA is over. Go with Jan Perry, forget Eric Garcetti, and move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, no speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item.
That brings us to item 20 called "Special for Cards."
Good, Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh is not here, Mr. Sachs? Mr. Sachs is not here. No speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item.
That would be item 21 called "Special for Cards."
Mr. Sachs? Mr. Sachs is not here. No speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered. Any other items?
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? No announcements? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Carets, would we all please rise for adjourned motions? And attention, Mr. Carets of the 5th District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many people throughout Los Angeles and the Jewish community worldwide are mourning the loss of Newton Becker, who passed away earlier this month at the age of 83 after a long illness. A resident of Bel Air, Newton Becker was an important philanthropist in support of the state of Israel as well as a champion of solar energy. Born in Cleveland, he graduated with a BA from Kent State University and a master's degree from Case Western. While working at Price Waterhouse in Cleveland and studying for the CPA exam, he started an in-house study system for the company, which he later established as an independent entity, the Becker CPA Review Course. It was from that training program that he earned his fortune, for it quickly became popular internationally and was developed in numerous languages. He was also a profound supporter of alternative energy as the founding investor and chairman of the Board of Luze International, the developer of solar energy electrical plants. He spoke before Congress on the need for tax benefits for renewable energy and advocated eloquently for electric cars. Needless to say, such causes are tremendously important to this city. Worldwide, Newton Becker was perhaps best known for his extraordinary generosity in supporting organizations that advocated for Israel's importance, security, and well-being. He donated mightily to such groups as Stand With Us, the Zionist Organization of America, the Middle East Media Research Institute, and the Committee for Accuracy on Middle Eastern Reporting in America. He was also on the Board of Stand With Us and was on the original Board of Trustees of the Simon Wiesenthal Center. In all of his efforts and throughout his life, Newton Becker was respected and revered as a dynamic yet humble man, who as a leader and mentor instilled wherever he went a teamwork spirit of cooperation and idealism. He leaves countless friends as well as his wife Rochelle and his son David, and he'll be greatly missed.
All right, a second there by Mr. Rosendahl, all members? Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Clerk, call the roll. This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.